For those who are in attendance this evening, if you wish to speak during the citizen's comment period, please sign up on the sheet in the back of chambers. Mr. Lee, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Item three is adoption of the meeting agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. And is there any discussion? All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion passes, five zero. Item four is matters from mayor. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the various organizations and agencies that work in our community to provide service and aid to the homeless individuals or prevent homelessness. Those agencies include, but are not limited to, the Valley Community Services Board, WARM, Valley Mission, Valley Supportive Housing, Shenandoah Valley Social Services, Embrace, the Life Works Project, and Reprieve. Please forgive me if I have not included an agency, but council appreciates the work and kindness provided by everyone in our community to care for unsheltered individuals. Item five is matters from council. Anybody?
If anybody's phones have been like my phone, we've had a lot of conversations and calls from folks about their assessment. I just want to acknowledge that and also just relay what we had attempted to sort of get out and appreciate staff's work in getting out the message to news outlets and otherwise. And I can't speak for all my members, but I think we're in the green light. As we added in the press release, there is 100% chance that the rate that folks saw will come down. So, and the last thing I think I know I want, and I'm sure my colleagues want, is for anyone to be, have received that, which it does say on the top right, this is not a bill, but regardless, that would get frustrated or upset or concerned when, but just want to let you know, there's a 0% chance that there's going to be a 30% tax rate hike in the city of Waynesboro. And I just wanted to sort of put that out as I've talked to a lot of friends and neighbors over the last weeks, I'm sure my colleagues have as well.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Anybody else? Okay. Item six is consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion passes, five zero. Item seven is to consider adopting a resolution of support for the 2023 Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity Transportation Grant application for the Waynesboro Western Portal Trail to the Claudius Croze Blue Ridge Tunnel. Ms. Allison.
Thank you. So I'll give a brief overview of our, the city of Waynesboro's application for the RACE grant. The Western Portal Trail, just real quick before I dive in, is the trail that connects the Blue Ridge Tunnel Trail down to the east side of Waynesboro. So the RACE grant is known as the Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity. It is also formerly known as the Build and then Tiger Grants by prior administrations. It is a discretionary grant through the U.S. Department of Transportation and provides funding for road, rail, transit, and other projects that promise to meet its national objectives. And it's an opportunity for public entities to obtain funding for multimodal and multi-jurisdictional projects that are difficult to find support for otherwise. It's a highly competitive program that provides both planning and construction grants. For the 2023 RACE grant cycle, funds will be awarded to service transportation infrastructure projects that will improve safety, environmental sustainability, quality of life, mobility, and community connectivity, economic competitiveness and opportunity, including tourism, state of good repair, partnership and collaboration, along with innovation. So Waynesboro's Western Portal Trail is a 1.3-mile paved multi-use trail that runs roughly parallel to U.S. 250. It starts at 1800 East Main Street, which is almost directly crossed from the Blue Ridge Butcha location, and it ends near the 1.7-mile post of the Blue Ridge Tunnel Trail. So this map shows the proposed layout of the trail. It would start down here, right across from the Blue Ridge Butcha location, follow along 250, right just past city lines before diverging from 250, crossing the railroad, and then linking up with the western side of the Blue Ridge Tunnel Trail, a little ways before the Western Portal Tunnel entrance. The trail will provide a continuous bicycle and pedestrian trail from the Village of Afton and Route 6 down to the city of Waynesboro. It will be a key link in the planned Three Knots Trail, which is a future 25-mile multi-use path from Charlottesville to the Village of Afton, and then with hope for future connections both to Richmond and Stanton. And the Western Portal Trail will be a key link to extending that to the city of Stanton. And also be a safer alternative for hikers that are coming down from the Appalachian Trail to resupply in Waynesboro before heading north into Shenandoah National Park or south down into the Blue Ridge Parkway area. It's estimated about 2,000 hikers make that journey down into Waynesboro annually. And then also it will be safer for bicyclists traveling on Bicycle Route 76. And then this is a quick map of sort of giving a broader view of the overall area where the trail would link in. Over here is the Village of Afton and the trail's eastern trailhead. And then here's where the Western Portal Trail would link in on the western side of Afton. And then it would hopefully continue on into Waynesboro on the eastern side. This green line here is representing the future East Main Street streetscape improvements that were funded through a recent round of Smart Scale. And they'll provide sidewalk improvements and also multi-use path, among other things. So eventually provide a good, clear destination through, or along East Main Street down into downtown Waynesboro and link up with South Lower Greenway and other downtown destinations. So the trail would be a boost to the East Main Street corridor, we believe. The area is a designated opportunity zone and also area of persistent poverty. Areas of persistent poverty are something that are particularly pointed out in the RACE grant criteria. These areas, projects within these areas do not require a grant match. And so Waynesboro's application would not require a match. And that's determined by census tract data, particularly five-year American Community Survey data from 2014 to 2018. And if it's 20% or higher poverty rate, then it's designated an area of persistent poverty. And that's the case in this project's location. This is also area that contains many chronically vacant buildings surrounded by low-to-monter income neighborhoods. And it's hoped that through the construction of this trail and more people coming and the foot traffic, it will help revitalize that area and provide an opportunity for interested people to repurpose the vacant buildings into additional amenities alongside places like Blue Ridge Butcha and Rockfish Gap. And then finally, this trail, along with the streetscaping improvements on the East Main Street corridor and then also Sunset Park, together these will provide sort of the sole public recreational facilities that are easily accessible on that side of town. And then finally, applications are due on February 28th in about two weeks. Staff is actively working on our application along with collecting letters of support from various organizations surrounding localities, political leaders, et cetera. Right now, our plan is to apply for the construction grant. And we're expecting the grants will be announced no later than June 28th, as far as timeline goes for that. That is all I have for you tonight. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions concerning the grant application or project?
Just to reform, there's no local match.
That's what we're expecting with our application, yes.
So it's 100% federal funding?
Yes.
Only available for infrastructure-related projects? Such as this?
Yeah. And those, and our codes located in, yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution supporting the grant application?
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that resolution passes, five zero. Item eight is to consider adopting a resolution approving the city of Waynesboro's participation in the proposed settlement of opioid-related claims against Tava, Allergen, Walmart, Walgreens, CVS, and the related corporate entities, and directing the city attorney and/or outside legal counsel to execute the documents necessary to factuate the city's participation in the settlements. Ms. Michelson.
Good evening, council. As we discussed about a year ago with the other opioid settlement with some of the other defendants, five other defendants have entered into national settlements, which Virginia has opted in to participate for a total amount of $20.00 billion. And the way it works, if you recall under the MOU that the council has already approved, and Waynesboro would be, if it opted into these additional settlements, these funds would be used for and distributed according to the same criteria that was in the prior MOU that Waynesboro is a part of, which basically is, Waynesboro would receive two different kind of allocations, and one would be directly from, Virginia gets how much from this? I think $192.003,000. Virginia gets $192.000,000 to distribute to its localities who opt in. Actually, I'm sorry, a maximum of $192.000,000 of localities who opt in. Because if you don't, if not 100% participation from all the localities who are part of the lawsuit, those localities will remain in the lawsuit. So these defendants will reserve money for anticipation of trial or if they have to have litigation awards and judgment awards for those who remain in. So the goal for Virginia is for all of the localities to participate. And you will receive a maximum of $192.000 directly, based on your proportion, percentages, I think, 3, 3, 4, 9, something of that nature. And then also, $300.000 will, a maximum of $300.000 will go to the Virginia Opioid Abatement Authority, which also, percentage of that will trickle down to the localities as well. So assuming maximum participation, this is significant money that Waynesboro would be, you know, a party to. And some of them, like Walmart, one is paying a lump sum right away. So that would be a larger contribution to Waynesboro. But some of the, most of the other ones are paying over time, five years, 10 years, just depending on their individual settlement agreements. CBS also has a punitive penalty in theirs for the pay restitution. So that will increase CBS's payment. So with that being said, outside council and I believe that it's in the city's best interest to opt in and be a participant in these five settlements. But I'll be happy to answer any questions or address any concerns.
Are there any questions from council from Ms. Michelson? No? Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the city's participation in the settlement?
Make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lee. And is there a second?
I made the motion.
Okay.
Oh, okay. I'll second it then.
Okay.
I didn't hear him.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there any discussion? No? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? And the resolution passes, five zero. Item nine is to consider adopting a resolution approving a well-access agreement between the city of Waynesboro and DuPont. Ms. Michelson.
Good evening again, council. In conjunction with the donation from DuPont of the former DuPont plant area, there is a well on that property, now city property, that DEQ and EPA require DuPont to monitor. It is not a source of contamination, but they are required under their feasibility plan to regularly access and monitor the well. So because it's now city property, we wanted, you know, DuPont, I mean, basically wanted assurance that they could have access as needed in accordance with the plan. And so we, I and DuPont's attorney drafted an agreement that protects the city's interests but also provides access to DuPont to fulfill their obligations. So again, I'll be happy to answer any questions about the well agreement.
Okay. Are there any questions from Ms. Michelson?
Just curiosity, how long do they have to monitor it? And how often?
They ask me those questions?
Sorry.
The plan is over several years. It depends, it's hard, I struggle because it's hard because it depends on what they find and what the results, you know, are dependent on how long they have to go out. But it'll be a minimum of five years because that's the first test under the whole entire plan of determining how much longer they would have to do testing. Since this is a non-contaminated well, it may be within that five-year time limit because other sites, the monitoring is already known to be longer. I think it's annual, but I don't have the plan in front of me. So that's just from memory.
Just out of curiosity.
Sure.
Any other questions? Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the city's participation in the settlement?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there a second?
Point of order.
Yes.
I think the introduction looking for the motion, for the motion to approve the agreement with DuPont for the monitoring station.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution approving a well-access agreement between the city of Waynesboro and DuPont?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wood, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion passes, five zero. Item 10 is to consider approving the fiscal year 2024 budget calendar. Mr. Cameron.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. City Charter, Section 5.2, outlines the required schedule for submittal of the school board's budget, city manager's budget, all public hearings, and adopting ordinances for tax rates and the annual budget. The calendar in front of you all conforms to all of those measures as all of the required public hearings that are listed in state code. A little bit of deviation from previous years, we are adopting this a little bit later than normal as we have two new council folks. Usually, we would have done this in October because elections were held in May. Since elections were held in November, we held it until after we could confirm the city council retreat. There is a budget work session scheduled prior to the presentation of the city manager's budget. And then there are also two potential budget work sessions scheduled after. The regular business meeting on April 24th is scheduled for all of the required public hearings for the budget and tax rates and would be the introduction of all and any necessary ordinances. And then on May 8th is scheduled for adoption. The equalized tax rate public hearing is scheduled for April the 10th and will be advertised on March the 3rd. If council has any questions about the calendar, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions for Mr. McCormick?
I think there's a typo. It should be Friday, March 31st, 2023.
Friday, March 31st.
Which, is in the middle advertisement for equalized real estate tax if necessary?
So that advertisement actually has to be done at least 30 days in advance of the public hearing.
Oh, I see. Okay. I was just going in chronological order and...
Yes. And so since the calendar was being moved around some, I may have missed it in chronological order. But the Friday, March 3rd will be the advertisement.
I just want to keep something honest there.
Well, actually, though, on the potential introduction of the final budget amendment, that should say 2023. So I will get that corrected before we put it in the city manager's budget.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the calendar?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes, five zero. Item 11 is communication, correspondence, and calendar. Mr. Hamp.
Yes, ma'am. I have two items this evening. The first has to do with special events. You're likely aware that, pardon me, special events are a big part of our community's activity and a big part of the programming offerings through the Parks and Recreation Department. I have several events that I want to draw to council's attention related to the service of beverage alcohol and several events that I'd like to just reference, anticipated street closures. So the city code provides the city manager authority to authorize the alcohol or service and sale of alcohol on public property. But my practice is to inform the council of when those events are going to occur and so that we're all on the same page. And so we have an event coming up in February. I'm not mistaken about that, Emma. Okay. So we have an event coming up in February that is the Mad Anthony Mud Run. That's a traditional, big event in the community and takes place or starts and concludes at Corner Spring Parks. And that's where the final event with beverage alcohol will occur. Then in June, on June 9th, the Wayne Theater has submitted a special event application for their annual Rock the Block Gala. And that involves a street closure on Main Street and the service of beverage alcohol at that event. That will occur in part on public property. So I wanted to alert council to that as well. And then finally, the Chili Brews and Blues, we have an application to resume that event. That will occur in September or on September 16th. And again, these three events involve the service of beverage alcohol. Rock the Block has a street closure. Chili Brews and Blues, we're still waiting for a final event layout, but that will likely involve a street closure as well. Then I want to inform the council of three events, or excuse me, an additional event that includes street closure but no beverage alcohol. And that's April 29th. We'll have the annual River Fest event. And they'll be seeking some street closures down on Main and possibly Arch. Typically, that's only on Main. But again, authority grants the city manager, excuse me, the code grants the city manager authority to give permission for the alcohol beverage and the street closures. But again, especially where alcohol is concerned, I want the council to be aware and make sure you're comfortable with that. Again, the urgent matter or the matter that's closest to us in time is the Mad Anthony Mud Run. We've typically had the alcohol or beer at that event. If you want to consider the June and the September events, that's fine, too. Just let me know when we can attend to that at a subsequent meeting.
Okay. Is that it?
That's, oh, that's it for the event item. So I have another item. I thought it would be helpful and appropriate to provide some general remarks about the municipal organization and our recent experience with homelessness and what's commonly known as Tent City. That recent coverage and community conversation regarding homelessness in Waynesboro reflects a fairly limited and case-specific view of the city or of the municipality's effort to attend to unsheltered or homeless individuals. Aside from employees in the police department or the Department of Social Services, the city does not employ professionals that are in regular contact with homeless or unsheltered individuals. And as the mayor noted, we rely to a great extent on cooperation and coordination with agencies in the community or in the region that have a homeless or sheltering-specific mission. While I've not done extensive or exhaustive research on this, it's my belief that such an arrangement is typical for small municipalities. Though nationally, the challenge of homelessness is pressing local governments of all sizes to explore new innovative responses to the challenges that unsheltered individuals and homeless individuals have in their lives and present for communities. In our environment, coordination and collaboration among various agents is key to delivering services. For Waynesboro currently and historically, the most significant assistance delivered from the municipality comes in the form of financial support to agencies that work directly with unsheltered or homeless individuals. In recent years, and especially during the pandemic, financial support from the city has increased significantly. Over the last three years, the city has provided financial support to agencies and programs. More specifically, over the last two or three fiscal years, $98,000 to the WARM organization. Those were largely CBDG or CDBG entitlement funds. We provided over $240,000 to Valley Community Services Board for sheltering of the homeless. And during the pandemic and the subsequent year, provided more than $350,000 in utility relief, which is intended to reduce financial stress on families. And while not all families or individuals that take advantage of that relief are in immediate threat of losing their home, certainly that helps stave off homelessness for some individuals and families. A few words about the more recent experience. Camping on public property is prohibited through general ordinance, prohibiting temporary residences and various other ordinances pertaining to health, sanitation, and nuisance. Similarly, camping and encampments on private property are regulated by the same ordinances. Enforcement by the PD or Waynesboro Police Department is typically prompted by complaint from the property owner and is typically enforced through no trespass orders. The department does not actively search The department does not actively search for encampments or individuals. However, we do have a duty to respond for calls for service, complaints, and certainly for criminal activity if it's believed or seen to be occurring. We'll be taking a closer look at coordinating enforcement based on complaints from neighbors. Recent trespass enforcement received coverage in the media and discussion in the community. It may seem trite to say, but the origins of homeless can be complex and the solutions equally so. We understand, and I want to reiterate this, that displacing settled individuals is disruptive, and we will work or continue to work to fulfill our responsibilities without introducing additional stress and difficulty to those impacted individuals. And again, I want to emphasize, as did the mayor, that we appreciate those agencies and individuals who render service and care to unsheltered and homeless in our community. Happy to respond to other questions that you might have.
Does anybody have any questions? All right. Thank you. Item 12 is Citizen Comment Period. I would like to remind speakers to state your name and address for the record. You'll have four minutes to address council. The light system serves as a timer. Once it turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds remaining. The red light indicates your time is up. We ask that you direct all your comments to council and be respectful of those who are speaking. We are here to listen and will not respond to questions during comment period. In many cases, your questions can be answered following the meeting by a call to council, following the meeting or to a call to council. Mr. Hamp?
Yes, ma'am. Frankie Hollingsworth.
Good evening. I'm Frankie Hollingsworth, 230 Owl Avenue. I'm the Director of Reprieve Ministries and animal Waynesboro resident. I'm here to talk about specifically their homelessness and Tent City. And this is not a time to be pointing fingers. It's, it's a time that we have a matter here that needs to be addressed, and it's no time to be blaming city officials, landowners, churches or anybody personally. No one in particular here is to be blamed for this. It's time to look in the mirror for every one of us and say, what can I do to combat the homelessness in this city? There's, it's, it's everywhere. It's not just in Tent City. I deal with homeless people all over this city and regularly going into Tent City to deliver food and supplies. It's on private land, and we see just what happened. We got to remember that these people in Tent City and the homeless people that we deal with in general, that somebody's son, that somebody's daughter, somebody's dad, somebody's mother. I know a mother and a daughter, both, that are homeless together. So, they are fellow citizens. People down in Tent City, they're residents of Waynesboro. Some of them graduated right here in Waynesboro. One in particular used to coach at the YMCA. Unfortunately, he made some choices and ended up where he was. And he's got to face that. I'm personally involved with, with all of them in Tent City and other places around the city, and I'm personally involved in people that's made it out of Tent City that are productive members of society. It wasn't good for what happened down there to people, however, it could be used to get us moving in the right direction. I know each, every one of them individual people personally and have been down there and prayed with each and every one of them. There are stories in there that would just break your heart, and I understand why some of these women and some of these men end up in that situation, and it could happen to every one of us. None of us is beyond that happening to us. We've been delivering food down there for years, and the war and COVID, that whole thing, it helped a little bit to get some housing, but as, as I heard you say, there was a lot of money spent on, on helping the situation. I've talked with every one of them down there at Tent City, and I've assured them that this is not city councils that, that made this decision. It wasn't city council that told the landowner, and furthermore, that landowner has allowed them to be down there for years. I know that was a tough decision for him to come up with and say, hey, you can't stay down here anymore. I know it was tough on him, because if not, he would have stopped it a long time ago. He did a good thing by allowing them to stay as long as he did. I believe everyone in this room has an opportunity to support the ministries that have boots on the ground that are doing something towards this homelessness. So, I see time's almost running out, but I know.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
All right.
Forgive me if I get this last name wrong, but Fidel Roriden.
My name is Fidel Ramirez. I moved to Waynesboro about 12 years, no, about 17 years now. I live on White Bridge Road. I'm here to speak about the issue you brought up. Frankie answered a lot of it, and I appreciate all, what all the departments are doing. But when you're down there yourself, you can see these, these holes in the system, why these people are ending up out there, and there's no blame on anybody. Like Frankie said, we ain't here to point fingers and blame anybody. We're here to try to get solutions and get cooperation, even though those organizations are doing what they're doing and helping in many, many, many ways. I know some of them because I volunteered with the youth when I first moved down here. I'm one of those ex-homeless people. If it weren't for people like you helping me back in my day, I wouldn't have been the stationary engineer that I became. So, I know the position you use hold in being a veteran from the PTSD. I understand what yous go through on your boards from the things that you have to decide on and not decide. But as Frankie was saying, me and my wife, back where I grew up in Ohio, I did a street ministry there for thousands and thousands of people, and I gave in my own property. My wife is a drug and alcohol counselor. We opened up our private home to turn it into a transitional home to help everybody. Wasn't, wasn't just veterans or homeless people, and we did it for years. We tried to do it here, but nobody jumped aboard. But you want to get relief for those people because, see, they need care 24/7. The system, nothing wrong with it, it stops at 5:00 or 4:00, and those people are still out there in the rain and the snow, dealing with their personal issues as well as homelessness. And that's where me and my wife was able to pick some of it up at. So, there are other, there are other solutions outside of you getting off your shift and going home, and that's great because you're doing a good job during the day, but they need a lot of help at night. I'm going to try to talk to my pastor, see if I can get some room to, to give classes. My wife was giving GED classes and Bible study classes, and we were doing it in the street. If we had a facility, we can do all that stuff in the evening. And you can go home to your warm dinner, not making fun of you, and rest to get ready for the next day of that. Kind of like a, I used to see it from the view of me being a custodian at one of the largest high schools in Shaker Heights, Ohio, and I know what the rush looks like in the morning, you know? I did it for 27 years, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention, because if not, this is what's going to happen. If it happened in the big cities, you're going to get a subculture, and it ain't going to be good subculture, because it's going to be those broken people trying to survive where they ain't got a way to survive. They're going to start stealing, robbing, and it's going to get bigger and worse.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
A.J. Young.
Good evening, council. A.J. Young, 237 Skyland Avenue here in the city of Waynesboro. Talk a little bit about the housing issue in the city. Currently, there are about 22,550 people who live in the city of Waynesboro. The median income for a household in Waynesboro is $43,480. There are several new homes within subdivisions that are priced from below $300,000, and very few new homes are listed with a price tag below that. The dream of homeownership for many families with this kind of income is out of reach, but what's worse is the reality that renting an apartment or home in this city is either becoming a nightmare or it is a nightmare for many individuals and families. One of the realities that the city of Waynesboro faces is the lack of fair-priced housing for people who simply want to rent and the level of dignity that should accompany those who rent property from every landlord in the city of Waynesboro. I do understand that the market dictates to a large extent and degree what happens to localities all across this nation and the impact on cities. I'm not here to argue that. What I am interested, interested in is understanding and/or identifying what the city's commitment is to the low-income citizens of this community as it relates to fair-priced, equitable rental units and the accountability of landlords to the tenants who rent from them after being aware of the issues. Goal two of the CAPSO Fiscal Year 2020 through Fiscal Year 2024 Strategic Plan says that in places where low-income people live are healthy and offer economic opportunity, that is a priority, with a focus area being affordable housing. Some time ago, citizens approached the council about having a place on the city's website where individuals could share concerns and issues that they were experiencing with the properties that they rent from in the city. To date, I've not seen in a very substantive way where that is displayed with ease of access on the website that does not require knowing exactly where to go and where to click with the ease of your smartphone. An equitable approach would be to use the search window on the site, type landlord or tenant in the drop-down menu, and have a link that drops down and tells you how to fill this form out with your concern. That is just part of being what intentional looks like. It all seems quite simple, and it is, but only if those who have concerns about the property that they are renting have a voice. Council, I don't believe that any of you wants to see anyone in the city whom you represent be unable to afford a decent place to stay in the city. I don't believe that any of you would want to see any person or family live in unbearable conditions in the city that you serve and represent. So, I'm asking you, number one, please make it possible for citizens in this community to share their concerns and issues on the city website in a way that is easily accessed from a smartphone. It's simple. Number two, I would ask that the city seek out the partnership with developers and local citizens to address in creative and substantive ways the issue of affordability and acceptability when it comes to housing in the city of Waynesboro. I'm asking you that you would consider partnering with those of us who care about our city and its most vulnerable citizens, because after all, they are citizens too. They have families, and they deserve to have what the best of this city has to offer, just like you would at Ivy Commons.
Thank you, sir.
Or Creekwood Village. Thank you.
Randall Wolfe.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name's Randall Wolfe. I live in Stewart's Draft, 144 Courtney Woods Lane. I do serve people in the city of Waynesboro through Bike Box, where I provide bikes to people either at low or no cost. First, I want to start off by saying I'm excited to support the portal up to the Croze Tunnel. I sit on the board of the Shenandoah Valley Bicycle Coalition, who I believe is preparing a letter of support for you, and if not, I'll make sure Kyle is on it tomorrow, because it's an exciting economic development opportunity for the city. I also want to ask that item eight, the resolution to tap into the money from the opioid-related crisis, how about if you use that money to help with affordable housing and unsheltered citizens of Waynesboro? Let's target that money to, to really care for our neighbors at risk. I also want to thank, I believe, two city council members who attended the vigil at the Y against hatred, but I was disappointed that the next day there were no city council members at the Affordable Housing Vigil at Embrace. And then, only days later, we heard about Tent City. I heard about it through a text from a friend who lives there or lived there at 10:10 that morning, because she didn't know what she was going to do. Needless to say, I think I was surprised and disappointed. You rely on so many other organizations, many nonprofits. It's time to take ownership as a city of this situation. You have given, what, $950,000 for renovation of an elementary school in Verona for animal, for an animal shelter? It's time to shelter citizens and people. There's a lot of things that we need in this city for, for those folks. One thing is a place that they can get mail. Imagine trying to keep up with your life without a mailbox, right? Or a place to charge your smartphone, or so many other things, a place to get out of the rain during the day. So, a day, a day shelter could be a critical element to help our, our neighbors. We have a lot of vacant buildings, right? Landowner is a construction company. Maybe we can partner with that landowner who does care about those people and get something done that would be a day shelter. I know this is a big issue, no easy answers, but there's a bunch of people in this room that want to find solutions with you and help you and support you, but you need to take the lead on this. It's not enough for churches or other nonprofits to try to lead on this. It needs to be the city of Waynesboro, the city of Stanton, the county of Augusta, and other municipalities throughout our state and nation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Lewis.
We have a homeless problem that we can see, it's easier to see, but we also have a problem with people living in unsafe and inappropriate living conditions, and due to the current housing market, many people don't feel safe speaking out and asking for the mold to be cleaned up, the leak to be fixed, and the porch railing to be stabilized. I volunteer with a fresh food program run by a local nonprofit and deliver to elderly neighbors struggling with food insecurity. I was shocked at the condition of some of these housing units, including bedbug infestations and mold. I went through a drive-through getting fast food, and I got talking to the gentleman taking my order. He mentioned that he works full-time at this fast-food restaurant but lives in a hotel with his kid, his wife and his kids because they can't find affordable, stable, permanent housing. They work full-time at a fast-food restaurant. How is it possible that he can't find affordable housing? And think, he's spending all of his money on a hotel room instead of paying rent or mortgage, building credit, establishing assets, and building a foundation in our city. I'm a mental health worker. I help folks discharge from our state psychiatric hospitals back into our community. Do you know how difficult it is to find housing, despite my clients having a housing choice voucher that guarantees rent will be paid and comes with a case manager? I have to discharge clients to hotel rooms because I can't find housing. They can't get their life back on track and, and on the ground, living in a hotel room, and it's unsustainable. Housing is the rock, is the foundation of stability and recovery. If you're constantly worried about having a roof over your head, how can you focus on your mental health? This is the most critical time for these folks. Every single one of my clients who have experienced homelessness have also experienced sexual trauma, theft and violence. Before my dog got too old, my husband and I would walk the greenway every weekend morning. We would often see WARM dropping off their nighttime residence, this was before COVID, at the pavilion right down here where the farmer's market is, despite whatever weather was going on. And my husband and I would stand there and watch these folks just scatter around the city, sometimes going to sleep under a bush to get some more sleep. I am grateful for what WARM can provide, but how do we not have a day shelter for these folks? In my job, I often work with a Haven, which is in Charlottesville. It's a day program. People can get their mail delivered there, get a hot meal, take a shower, get access to a computer to get, to maybe look for a job or a rental application, and it's there, it's support. They do groups in there. It is embarrassing and appalling that we allow our neighbors to live like this. We can do better, and it is absolutely our responsibility to do better. We should be living every day, serving our community, which means serving every member of our community regardless of their circumstance. I'm here to voice my support for Virginia organizing and the priorities they are fighting for. We need a rental inspection program and tenant complaint line. We need to incentivize developers to include affordable units in all these great new developments popping up all across town. We need to support funding housing programs and eviction reduction programs, and we need to support low-barrier housing options. A recent story in the News-Virginian, News Leader, sorry, said Waynesboro is short about 800 housing units for its knees. We should be creative about creating housing, creative housing solutions, looking at zoning, creating tiny house communities, encourage housing above storefront downtown, and partner with developers and nonprofits. The lack of ideas is not the problem, it's the lacking of political will. It's easier to judge and look the other way and say it's not me. Yep, thank you.
And if, you could state your name and address for the.
Oh, sorry. Jennifer Lewis, 113 I-3.
Thank you.
Connie Wright-Zink.
Good evening. I'm here this evening.
And your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Connie Wright-Zink.
Oh, I'm sorry, Connie Wright-Zink, and I live in Middlebrook. And I'm here this evening as a member of the Waynesboro Chapter of Virginia Organizing, and we continue to want to raise up those in our community that are living in substandard housing rented out by negligent landlords, as well as those unable to find any affordable housing and who are forced to find shelter in tents or abandoned buildings. We've been out in Waynesboro for over two years, gathering information and stories from low-income and unhoused neighbors to understand the extent of their struggles. We do this because our city needs to know how many of our residents live in fear of eviction if they complain about unaddressed issues in their rentals or are left with no choice but to take their children into abandoned buildings to sleep. And we have heard several stories that are directly that, small children crawling under fences and crawling into basements of abandoned homes to sleep. How can we sleep at night in a warm bed after a good meal, knowing how desperately unsafe and inhumane in the day-to-day existence of many of our neighbors? How can we allow anybody, but most especially children, our elders, and those with physical or mental challenges, to live such grim lives? We can work together with all the support organizations in Waynesboro to find answers to these questions. Virginia Organizing is willing to help our city do just that. We need a commitment from city officials to work with us to find solutions that lift up all of our citizens to a fair and humane equality. Without that work, we are nothing more than a shameful example of selfish, compassionless people who think, I have mine, you just need to work harder for yours. I finish with one last question. Can we get a commitment from the city to continue working to solve these problems? Thank you.
Thank you.
Donna Yobbs.
Hi, Donna Yobbs, 20 Windsor Drive, Fishersville. Thank you for this opportunity to speak today. I'm with the Waynesboro Chapter of Virginia Organizing. I'm here to speak about affordable housing. It's a critical issue that's facing many communities. It includes high housing costs, how prices have gone up much faster than the wages have gone up, and it's causing many people to lose their ability to afford a house, much like AJ has mentioned. It's also causing many people to lack the ability to get into affordable housing, mostly because the waiting lists are so long for both affordable and subsidized housing. And what ends up happening is you're displacing many members of our community. People are losing people who are dear to them as neighbors and what makes up the Waynesboro community, the Augusta community. It's also meaning you're losing people in the school system that are very dear to our children and our neighbors' children, and it really weighs heavy on our community. As a Lark, one of the things I did is I went to ChatGPT, which is an AI program, and I asked, why do we care about affordable housing? And it came back and said, the economic benefits of providing affordable housing can have a positive impact on the local economy. It frees up money for people to spend on other goods and services. It can lead to more stable and diverse communities. It can attract businesses and create jobs for the city. It is just so important to this city, this community, this state, and that is, it's just so obvious to our community that we need to stand behind this. So from Virginia Organizing, we really want to work with the city to have a look at, how can we partner to make this a priority for the city, for this area? What can we do to work with other community organizations to bring this forward? I also want to second a lot of the concerns that were brought up today about the homelessness problem and what can we do to help with that. I've worked with my church, Grace Lutheran, with Warm on providing shelter, and I also want to echo a lot of the issues needed with the day shelters, that we need to make sure that we're solving not just a bunch of point problems, but that it's the whole ecosystem, that when people are able to find shelter at night, they also need to find shelter in the day. They need to be welcome in our community. They've gone to our high schools, they've been going to JMU. One of the guys was a football player, he's had several concussions, he's not able to hold down a job. And what can he do to be a welcome member of our community? What can he do to feel welcome? Because he's been through our system, he knows everybody in the community, and how can he still be a part of this? So let's all work together and see what solutions we can find. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jordan Fust.
Hello, Honorable Counsel. I'm Jordan Fust of Stewart's Draft. I am a member of the Waynesboro Chapter of Virginia Organizing, like many other folks that came out tonight. I'm also a co-owner of a farm that operates in Waynesboro at the farmer's market, so I get to talk to a lot of the community and some of the homeless folks that live at Tent City. And through Virginia Organizing's outreach campaigns, we've not just made up these issues, we've gone door-to-door knocking, we've set up at events all over the city, talking to anyone who will listen. And almost everyone we speak with has some sort of housing issue. There's terrible stories of abusive landlords and black mold in homes that isn't remediated. Even, it's on the news in WHSV, it was shared, that a woman with three children was living in an apartment with black mold. That's what Waynesboro is projecting to the greater world around us, and I think the council doesn't want that, and no one in this community wants that for each other. I ask the council, please work with the community to make Waynesboro a place we can all have safe and dignified housing, and we need to do something to protect the housing that we already have that is substandard and going into disrepair. We need some sort of rental inspection program to pinpoint and fix those issues, and we need creativity and bravery to create new affordable housing options in the face of so much money pushing for large homes for single-family in suburbs. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Andrea Jackson.
Unlike everybody, Andrea Jackson, Ward A. I just want to thank, this has nothing to do with my statement, but the city council and the city management for holding a meeting on February the 8th at the Rosenwald Center at 6 o'clock about the pending community development block grant. And I hope that the community comes out and lets their voice be heard about how they would like that money to be spent, and I commend the city for making that open and listening to the community. What I want to say is a little bit different, because I was very moved by the different facts and stories. I came home, I've been born and raised here in Waynesboro, and I came home in 2010, and I thought it just was going to be like a one-year stop, and 12 years later, I'm still here. And so about 2011, someone called, and I got involved in Virginia Organizing, and back then it was a saw, it was standing, I said, Waynesboro. And they said, well, what do y'all want to focus on in Waynesboro? And so when I came back home, I live in Ward A, and when I was in elementary school, I had to walk, there wasn't buses. So I had to walk from, you know, I lived on like a hill beside Fairfax Hall to Winona, and I had to go across and like walk past Commerce Apartments and all of that. But that, back then, you know, it just was that. But when I came home in 2010, I was like, oh my God, like, I was like, this is, this area, I didn't, wouldn't feel safe if children that were like half my age, eight or nine, would walk by themselves. And so we got together and we said, hey, we're going to go to this area and ask them, just in general, what did they think about the community? And back then, it looked really nasty on the outside. And so like, we talked to the community and this, that, and the third, and you know, I don't know if that helped or not, but like eventually, the people who owned it, and maybe the city like encouraged them to like clean it up, and you know, it looks better on the outside. But I also went in like 12 years ago, and it was really bad. And I feel like now, when we was working or doing the things that we were doing the last year, the inside, like, it's one thing for the outside to be okay, because it kind of gives a false facade that everything is okay, but on the inside, it still was not good, and these people deserve to have adequate, decent housing. And so, it's so funny, because like Connie was saying, we've worked on this for about two years, and I was not on the housing committee, and I was just sort of like, what? Why are we doing this one? I don't see how we can, you know, really make a change unless we're out here, like actually buying people's houses. But in the last year, you know, I've seen how important this issue is, because it's also affected me, you know? I have had a mental health crisis, and had to stop working in 2020, and I've started rebuilding my life, and I've, like, are these people, and if it wasn't for my parents, I could have been on this street. And I've tried to use the facilities and different things, and so once everyone is saying is that these are different people's lives, and we ask that we, myself, as well as Virginia Organizing, and all of these organizations-
Thank you so much for your time.
-want to help the city, help the community.
Thank you.
Deidra Becky.
Hello, I'm Deidra Becky in Ward A, and I'm also with Virginia Organizing. So my story is just that I've lived in an apartment in Ward A for several years, and after it was bought out by a corporation, we stopped seeing responses for maintenance requests, to the point where for several months I had a leaking roof, which is now opened up and the plaster's falling down, and I can't imagine what's going up there, going on up there with mold. So sometime after that, I got involved with Virginia Organizing, and I've only just now started talking to people. And mostly I'm talking to my neighbors. I'm hearing things about sink leaks, sewer leaks backing up into kitchen sinks, holes in floors, heaters going out and being out for a week. These things all sound like urgent problems that aren't being addressed, and a rotating cast of maintenance people who don't seem to care much, but at least maybe seem to care more than the office does. And, you know, what they have in common is, most people, they know that they are being taken advantage of. A lot of people even grow up in the same building, and they know that nothing's been renovated. And the website advertising the building is showing a perfect apartment that looks up to date, all the fixtures, and what's actually there is something not renovated since the 70s, when it was pilt. And meanwhile, their rent is going up $100 every year at this point. So, but we don't know is what to do. We can't all be lawyers or city inspectors or public speakers. So, so I was just wondering why there's not any help for these people that all seem to be in the same boat. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Okay. All right. Moving on to item 13, we have a closed meeting, and is there a motion to go into closed meeting?
Madam Mayor, I'm sure this meeting be recessed and that the city council of Waynesboro immediately reconvene in a closed meeting in order to, number one, discuss the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including the terms or scope of such contract, where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the city's bargaining position or negotiating strategy, and the relocation or expansion of business industry where no previous announcement has been made relating to Nature's Crossing, Technology Center Park, as authorized by sections 2.2-3711A5 and 29 of the Virginia Code. Number two, discuss the acquisition of real property for the Greenway Trail and city offices as authorized by section 2.2-3711A3 of the Virginia Code. And number three, consult with legal counsel regarding litigation filed by Mike Martin, where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the city's negotiating or litigating posture, as authorized by section 2.2-3711A7 of the Virginia Code.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Do I have a second?
One second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any discussion? Okay, this requires a roll call vote. Ms. Portal.
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood.
Aye.
Councilman Allen. Councilman Short.
Aye.
Councilman Lee.
Aye.
We are in closed session. We are in closed session.
Is there a motion to return to open meeting and certify the closed meeting?
Um, Madam Mayor, not Mr. Mayor. Madam Mayor, I move to adopt the following resolution, is that right? All right. Whereas the City Council of Waynesboro has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the City Council that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Waynesboro hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from public meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from public meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and to only such business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council of Waynesboro.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Burrell, this will recall, um, will require a roll call vote.
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Wood?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Short?
Aye.
Councilman Lee?
Aye.
We are back in session. And item thir-, um, item thirteen is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion.
Thank you. Mr. Allen, do I have a second?
I will second.
Any will second.
Okay, Mr. Lee, thank you for that second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.